Good evening and welcome to the, what is today? February 19th, 2019 joint work session between City Council and the LTD Board. Can I turn it over to my colleague?
Oh yes, thank you Mayor Venice. I'd like to go ahead and call the LTD Board to order.
We'll begin with just a quick round of introductions since you may not all know each other, so just name and which board or council you're sitting on. And so, just start to my right.
Betty Taylor, Eugene City Council.
Emily Secord, Lane Transit District.
Mike Clark, loosely associated with the City of Eugene.
Joshua Scov, Lane Transit District Board.
Chris Pryor, Eugene City Council.
Steven Yet, LTD.
Jennifer Yeh, Eugene City Council.
Terry Harding, City of Eugene Staff.
Andrew Martin, LTD Staff.
Chris Henry, City of Eugene Staff.
Don Reese, City Manager.
Kay Reed, LTD Board of Directors.
Don Norden, LTD Board.
Caitlin Vargas, LTD.
Emily Semple, Eugene City Council.
Laura Jackson, LTD GM.
Carl Yeh, LTD Board President.
And Lucy Venice, Mayor. Just a couple of pieces. We will be missing two councilors, Greg Evans and Clara Cyret. Clara Business, Greg not feeling well. Alan Zelenka always races in a little bit late from his job in Salem. After staff does their presentation, we will alternate one city councilor, one LTD Board member back and forth. I'll give you, we'll give you, I'll keep the queue for councilors. Carl will keep the queue for board members. We'll give you two minutes to speak so that we have time to get through as many comments as possible and save time a little bit at the end because the culmination of this is to vote to move forward. So with that, I turn it over to staff.
Thank you Mayor. I'm Chris Henry, the City of Eugene Transportation Planning Engineer. Mayor, Board President, Council and Board, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on the Moving Ahead Project. With us today are Andrew Martin, Lane Transit District Development Planning Associate, and Terry Harding, Principal Planner with the City of Eugene. Moving Ahead intends to provide safe and accessible transportation for people walking, biking, rolling with a mobility device, or riding the bus along five key corridors. At the end of our presentation, we will recommend action to affirm the proposed investment packages as presented for public review. Your action today will allow the community to review and comment on a range of investment options. We will report back to you mid-year with what we hear to inform your decision-making that will begin later in the year. Terry will begin our presentation. Terry?
Thank you, Chris. So here's your agenda for our presentation. We're going to try to keep it pretty brief. I'll remind everyone of the project background, then we'll review the results of our recent outreach efforts. We'll tell you about the proposed investment packages, go over next steps, and then ask for you to act on putting the investment packages out for public review. And I'd just like to take a moment to talk about the decision-making process for this project. It's been incremental from the beginning, from early direction on which corridors to actually study, to public outreach on the needs in each corridor, to thorough technical analysis of all the corridor concepts. We have reported back to both board, the board and the council, on the latest technical analysis results, as well as how people in the community are receiving these ideas about how to invest in all the corridors. Today's work session is another step in this incremental process that we hope will prepare you for your big decision toward the end of this year. So in essence, Moving Ahead is an implementation project for our community's transportation and land use vision for the future. We've been working to carry forward the policy direction contained in InVision Eugene, LTD's Long Range Transit Plan, the 2035 Transportation System Plan, Vision Zero, and the Climate Recovery Ordinance. All of these are important guiding documents that set the vision and context for doing the Moving Ahead work. Our community vision, there it is, sets the framework for how we grow over the next 20 years. And all of the corridors are important to invest in over that time horizon. With Moving Ahead, we're focusing in on the next 10 years and planning where and what should be built first along some of our most important streets. We're also coordinating with more near-term city and LTD projects such as new bicycle and pedestrian crossings and operational changes to the transit system, such as those under consideration through Transit Tomorrow. So I'm going to pass it off to Andrew to go over the next couple of slides, and I'll advance for you.
So as Terry mentioned, we get this question a lot about the connection with Transit Tomorrow and how our system's going to grow in the future. Just wanted to kind of highlight a few things about that. First off, we're doing the Transit Tomorrow decision-making before the Moving Ahead decision-making so you can feel confident in how our transit system will work in the future. But they're really looking at different scopes and timelines. Transit Tomorrow is a three-year look at our whole system across the entire region. Moving Ahead is really about a 10-year program of investments in our community. We're talking about capital investments along our key corridors. I think Tom Schwetz, our Planning Director, says it best that Moving Ahead is really a North Star decision. It's about where we want to go as a community and kind of trying to build that out, while Transit Tomorrow is a shorter-term look at how we're going to operate in the meantime and what our community expects of us as we move towards that North Star decision. So if you recall, Moving Ahead started back in 2015 where staff did some high-level analysis and then really went out to the community and asked for the community to develop designs. And we took those designs and we have been doing technical work for a while. You received an update on the results of that technical work towards the end of last year. And after that, we went out and we did a public comment period where we asked the community about, we presented the information to them, we asked the community about how they wanted to prioritize each alternative in each corridor. So not about the whole system, just about each corridor and what they wanted to see in each of those corridors. What we're going to do after we adjourn this session today is go back out to the public for another public comment period, but this time we want to take a look at the system level. So we've developed a series of investment packages that allow us to look, not at each corridor, but at the whole system and how that will work. So during our public outreach period last fall, we held quite a few events. We were out in the public doing tabling, a number of listening sessions, presentations to committees and interest groups. We held an in-person open house along each of the five corridors. And we also conducted an online open house, which was open for a month, where we solicited feedback. We tried to contact each of the potentially impacted property owners and meet with them individually. And we also did a webinar for interested agencies and tribes. So I think we did do quite a bit of outreach and we're excited to get back out in the community and make a similar effort. All of that culminated in December 2018 when we had a sounding board committee, which if you'll recall is part of our committee structure, which helps us make recommendations to all of you. So what did we hear? We asked the public about which criteria were most important. We had 13 criteria and the top five were the same in both the in-person open house and in the online open house. People who responded to us, they told us that they really were interested in the benefits of the projects and less interested in the impacts. So the top five criteria were bike and pedestrian safety investments, increases in bus ridership, decreases in transit travel time, the impact on LTD's annual operating cost, and the jobs and populations served. The less important criteria people reported were things like impacts to trees or parking spaces, things like that. They're clearly still very important, but the community really did tell us pretty strongly that the benefits were most important to them. And within each corridor, we asked, you know, what mode makes the most sense? I think the question was, does this work well? It was a range of like kind of one to five, where we said, do you have serious concerns about this, all the way up to works well. What you're seeing in this graph are the average scores that the community members we heard from, what they said each alternative rated for them. So a couple of things you'll note here. The no-build alternative is in gray, the enhanced corridor in blue, and the MX alternative in green for each of the corridors. The no-build in general rated lower than all of the build alternatives. So we felt that we were hearing from the community that they wanted to do something rather than nothing. What that is, is a little bit less clear. River Road is the only corridor where we heard from community members that MX was the preferred alternative. In the other corridors, the average rating for enhanced corridor was higher. Partially that's because the MX alternative had lots of people who rated it a five and some people that rated it a one, and it averaged out to be a lower average rating than the enhanced corridor for those four. I think that that's all there is on that slide. So just to kind of move us forward, the investment packages we developed were based on the technical analysis and the community feedback. So looking at all those 13 criteria, kind of looking at the top five that people reported they cared about the most, and the public feedback about the alternatives in each corridor, we developed a series of five packages. Two of those are what we call bookend packages. So we wanted to present the information, if you built an all-enhanced corridor package and an all-MX package, is kind of two ranges on the spectrum. And then we have three, what we call mix and match packages. These represent varying levels of investment, starting with a lower level of investment leading to build alternatives in all five corridors. And we think that they prioritize projects for the next 10 years. So again, we wanted to stress, a no-build doesn't mean not ever, it just means not now, not in this set of investment packages. Taking, thanks Terry. So what we developed were these five packages. In the enhanced corridor, obviously it's all enhanced corridor. In the MX, you'll notice the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard has enhanced corridor because we did not propose an MX alternative in this corridor. The other three start out with Package A as a lower level of investment, with Highway 99 being proposed to have the enhanced corridor on River Road with MX. Package B builds on this with additional investment on Coburg Road and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, both proposed for enhanced corridor. And Package C has an additional build alternative on 30th Avenue to LCC, again with the enhanced corridor. And again, these are supposed to represent a range of investments, and they were developed using the public feedback and staff's technical analysis, which is presented in the materials you received.
As you may recall, there's an Oversight Committee that makes recommendations along with the LTD Strategic Planning Committee. The Oversight Committee is comprised of elected appointed officials from each agency as well as agency partners. We heard from the Oversight Committee that there is a community cost to selecting no-build. That is, by doing nothing, we do not achieve or advance our community policy goals. They wanted us to emphasize that these investments are intended, as you've heard a few times, intended to be implemented over the next 10 years, so it's a longer-term program. They also expect that there could be different combinations of investment packages that may emerge from our community engagement over the next few months. The Oversight Committee, along with the Lane Transit District Strategic Planning Committee, recommended that the proposed set of packages be, well, they recommended these proposed set of packages for public evaluation. Because understanding how we pay for these investments is important to you and the community, we have engaged the Lane Council of Governments to research possible funding strategies, including a potential implementation timeline, and take a look at how other communities and transit agencies are partnering to fund enhanced transit corridors. Here's a schedule that shows community engagement and the decision-making process with a public comment period in March and April, a report back to you through a joint work session around mid-year, say June or July, and a public hearing later in the year after your break to begin your decision-making process. To close, you've heard through your updates about how the Moving Ahead Project is an important response to our community values, is expressed through policy decisions by both agencies that guide our future. How Moving Ahead has been shaped by community engagement and active listening that responds to our community needs for safe and accessible transportation for people that walk, bike, roll with a mobility device, or ride the bus. How Moving Ahead has been evaluated in a responsible way, consistent with a triple-bottom-line approach to decision-making. With CARE Today, we recommend that you take action to affirm the proposed investment packages as presented for public review. Doing so allows for more thoughtful listening to what is important to our community and will inform the decision-making process ahead. Thank you, and we're open for questions and discussion at your pleasure.
Thank you very much. I just, I want to thank you. I think the materials were incredibly clear and easy to follow, so I appreciate that. It was, well, well done. I have Mike in the queue, and so I'll let you take it Ben.
See Kate.
Take it away, Mike.
I first want to say thank you for this presentation. That was incredibly thorough. I get how much work is behind all of this, and all the people and all the staff who have been working on this for a long time. I got two minutes. Okay, fine, good. Years ago, while I was in the advertising and marketing business, some folks that I knew built a very large movie studio indoors. And a lot of two or three different editing bays and state-of-the-art stuff that created the ability to make movies and do all kinds of great video work. And it cost them $5 million to build. And within about nine months of completion, there was a piece of software that became available that you could have done literally the exact same thing for about 50 grand worth of software. So I'm mindful of that lesson as I look at this and say, I'm really happy to know that LTD is working very hard on future mobility options for our community because they're necessary and public transit is necessary. But this is a very, very large amount of money we're talking about. And it's a very substantial investment. And I have concerns that technology may alter how we get around in a public transportation model within that 10-year timeframe. And so I'm, before saying, yeah, sure, let's go ahead with these investments, I have more questions before I'm ready to do that because of what I think may, we may see in changes in public transportation as time goes on. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you. I feel like this is the eighth or ninth time that I've seen this presentation, and every time I understand it, which is very good. And it doesn't change, which is also a good sign. My first question before taking in anything else is, when will the LCOG funding and implementation information be available? I feel like that's a very important part of the decision-making process.
We're working on the scope of work with them right now. I don't have an exact timeline for you. I would say probably closer to the end of the year, but I, I mean, I don't want to put a deadline out that we have to push up against.
Sure.
The intent would be that that information is available for you as you move into your decision-making process to inform the decision-making.
Okay. And then, so are they going to look at each of the funding packages and have a strategy for each one?
No, it's broadly, what are the typical or possible funding sources available? How are other communities addressing these demands?
Okay.
But it's not specific to these packages.
Okay.
What we might see as a strategy is an incremental approach to investment, and we've talked about that in various conversations with both bodies about how with this North Star decision, we have this 10-year range of investments that we can chip away with at or provide value to our community.
Thank you.
Eltor Yeh.
Thank you. I really like how this Moving Ahead process has really incorporated all different types of transportation. I know when I'm taking it out to neighborhood groups, the idea that we're improving mobility for people in cars, or buses, or bikes, or walking is really attractive to people, and it gets everyone involved in this process, a lot more than some of the other, like Transit Tomorrow, where people can't always see themselves in that. So that's been great. And I really think it's great how the timing with doing this project, with our conversations about our investments in housing are really linked, because I think public transportation or all types of transportation, and especially on these key corridors, and how we're looking at density and how we can emphasize density and affordable housing along these key corridors is really going to connect with each other. And that brings me to the two projects that are in, potential projects that are in my area, which would be Coburg and MLK. I wasn't on the council in 2015 and 16 when some of these decisions were made, and so I don't know all of the background. But my first concern about MLK is, we have a very dense population in the Kinz Row area, which is off of MLK, obviously. So I'm wondering, the decision to not consider the higher level of investment, is that based solely on the fact that Springfield may not be on board, or were there other factors?
Your intuition is generally correct. Springfield wasn't ready yet to make investments on their Centennial Boulevard that would connect with Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, but that's a future opportunity there. They also, they would have to figure out how it would fit, and the context changes as you cross between the jurisdictions.
Right. Right. I would just hate to see us not keep that option open. I mean, like I said, it's a very dense area. It also has a large affordable housing complex in that area, and I think public transportation and affordable housing work really well together, or they should anyways. And so, you know, not considering that 10 years from now Springfield may be in a different position, or they may see the benefits, or, I don't, I just would like people to keep that in mind. My other question was about, like I said, we're looking at all different types of transportation. Why is there no bike improvements on either Coburg and MLK, where the other ones show bike improvements with the yellow lines?
On Coburg Road, there are bike lanes that potentially could be protected bike lanes, similar to what we're examining on River Road. And then on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the sidewalk itself is a shared facility for people biking by design. When Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard developed, the bikeway was on the sidewalk. And so those facilities already exist for people there.
So just to make clear, you're not, these plans do not include any improvements for bikes on either of these two corridors, or they're not illustrated properly?
It's correct on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard because the facilities already exist. There's an opportunity on Coburg Road to add a protected bikeway there, different than what is there today.
And so why is that not on here? Because you have protected bike lanes mentioned on other buffered bike lanes, stripes. Why was it left off of this plan?
I can't answer that, but what I can tell you is-
Maybe we can fix that when we shop it around so that people can understand what we're talking about.
I think it also provides an opportunity to give an example of how, when it comes time to build any of these improvements along the corridors, we'll do our best to use the best practices of the day. In fact, we're not sure on River Road, what's the best way to provide a protected bikeway? And then how do the people riding bicycles interact with the transit stops, be it an enhanced corridor or an MX corridor? So those are details to be worked out in final design, and there are opportunities all along the way as our knowledge increases.
Is there anyone from LTD who'd like to speak or ask a question? If not, I will throw myself on there. Josh, you look like you want to-
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I wanted to say, thank you again for the presentation. This, I hope City Council can see about how many intersections of topics and issues that Moving Ahead brings to the table. What I see here is there's opportunities for climate recovery, Vision Zero, mobility options for our people, our people's health, housing equity. So many things are, so many of these things are tied to transportation. And I want to make sure people know that it's, we don't have the luxury to just wait for things to happen. If you look at our current state, I don't think it's going to get magically better in 10 years. We do have to take some, I believe, we have to take some kind of action now so that we can ensure that our citizens have an excellent transportation system to get around. And I appreciate Counselor Clark's thought that, you know, technology does change, and we should take advantage of those technological changes, but as everyone, well, as I would say, you know, you could wait forever to buy the next best computer, but if you don't buy it now, you'll never buy one because they're always going to get better. So that's something else I want to throw out there, too. And I didn't make this point very clear, but it is important for us to be ready with these projects so that when funding does become available, we're ready to go. And so we're not scrambling, trying to figure out what projects we want. And so we can, we have an opportunity here to identify what projects our community wants, what we think is important to support, and that way we can move forward so that 10, 20, 30 years from now, we, again, we have that system that addresses all of those issues that I mentioned earlier. So thank you.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Actually, I think Commissioner Yeh said most of what I was going to say. And so I'll just kind of add on that I think an investment in transportation is a core function. It is the responsibility of a community, whether it's through its local transit district or whether through its municipal government, to ensure that a safe, reasonable, and timely transportation system is in place. And I think the timely aspect is the one that is very significant for me. And just as Carl said, you need to start thinking about it now and start investing in it now because we're thinking, whenever you talk about transportation infrastructure, you're automatically talking 10, 20 years out. And if I don't put a roof on my house because it's not raining, and I say, well, I'll wait till it rains and then I'll put a roof on my house, you're going to get pretty wet. And so you need to start thinking about the roof now. And I agree, technology will change, without a doubt, technology will change. And I'm sure a lot of cars will convert from internal combustion engines to electricity, but there will still be cars, and we will still need to be able to accommodate them. And it's been a desire of communities to get the number of cars reduced so that people are riding more economical, more carbon-neutral, more sustainable systems like buses or transit or whatever. So I think that's a desirable element for any city as it grows to have in place, a way for large numbers of people to ride on a single mode of transportation. I don't want to get rid of cars. I don't think anybody here wants to get rid of cars, but we want to have everything in its right proportion. And I think a car, hopefully an electric car, hopefully an autonomous electric car, is a part of that mix, but I don't think it takes the place of public transit or rapid transit. And so I think we need to consider its place in the mix, and we need to start sooner rather than later on accommodating that mix. And so for me, I would go ahead and move forward with this because it's the best plan we have right now, subject to change as we go along. But I think it's the best we have right now that will get us to where we need to go.
Next, we have Don.
Well, I want to kind of segue off what Counselor Pryor was just saying about funding, and I don't know whether you guys can respond or not, but I was just at a town hall meeting this morning with Senator Wyden. And one of the elements he said was in their budgeting process is they wanted to change the tax thing to give a substantial boost to alternate fuels for public transportation. And I'm just wondering if in your studies, you've had an opportunity to evaluate that sort of thing, or also to, well, I know by design of the process, we're in a metro area, but we're feeding, you know, 20% of our population outside of the metro area, and they're bringing their cars and stuff into it. Are we not paying attention to the- Are we not paying attention to the 10-year process of building our Exurb communities to more dense status, so we would have a greater public transportation system back and forth between these rural communities?
I think that might be a little outside the scope of Moving Ahead. Transit Tomorrow is looking at our whole system regionally. Moving Ahead really is focused on the city of Eugene, and very specifically on five corridors, where we expect the community to be growing. So, well-
35,000 more people were going to spread out all through Lang County. I know. I mean, we started out with Transit Tomorrow being a three-year project, and Moving Ahead being a 10-year project. So we're really looking at the 10-year project that's going to establish this. And of course, you're going to coordinate with Springfield as well. But, you know, it's just not presented in our documents here.
Any councilors wanting to be in the queue? Betty?
Okay, I'm off the subject, too. But along with what Mr. Norton said, when people heard that we were meeting together, I was asked some questions, and one of them was, are they going to do anything about rural areas, about small towns? People are very concerned about all the small towns around that don't have any public transit, and any way to get back between towns. And also, another thing that people ask me is about, what are the plans for holidays, weekends, late nights? If we want people to ride, use transit, we need those things. And being from South Eugene, I have to say, none of this really directly affects us. But we don't have very good bus service in South Eugene. It is not often enough or in as many places as it should be. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to address a couple of things that have come up with the interest city transit and the rural areas. I do know that with the new House Bill 2017 tax money that will be coming in, there are specific projects that are looking at interest city connections with transit. Also, we have a pilot project right now in Cottage Grove, looking at mobility on demand, which would be something we could use in rural areas in our district, as well as in the metro area. So we are definitely looking at all sorts of different options for transit and transportation outside of the metro area. And the other thing that I wanted to address was in the comments, in a Moving Ahead conversation about night and weekend service, we are looking at those trade-offs in the Transit Tomorrow study that we're doing currently. And our public comment period is open, I still, I believe, still. So feel free to go online and check out the Transit Tomorrow Open House, and definitely put your input in. That is, one of the things that we're looking at is increased weekend and evening service.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is a ton of work, so I appreciate it very much. Counselor Taylor and I were talking this morning about what was coming up, and one thing that we discussed is the ability to take dogs on buses. So I'm wondering if that has any consideration. I'd also like to see even more attention paid to bicycles on buses, since we're using bikes to get between buses. And I agree that the biggest comments I hear are, I can't get to work, or wherever I'm going at night around the weekends. I hear that even more than, it doesn't come off enough, or it stops too often. So I hope that that's really a big preference, as our society gets more homogeneous over the days of the week. I think that catering to the pre-normal nine-to-five, Monday through Friday workweek is outdated. So thanks very much.
Oh, just to make sure, any LTD board members want to speak? Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah. Again, thank you for all the work. And I've said this, and I've been to some of the open houses, but I want to reiterate what Counselor Smith says, it is a ton of work. Just a few comments, and I appreciate hearing the discussion. I hope I didn't alarm anyone by not speaking earlier. Mike looked worried. But I really appreciate that people talked about, you know, I mean, Carl's point about alignment with plans and policies. I mean, we should really see in this the implementation of a ton of things that have happened at the city, as well as at LTD. Just a couple of comments, just following on what Kate said, I know we're not talking about Transit Tomorrow, but Kate rightfully brought up the point about weekend and evenings. It's also important to say that we're not just looking at that, actually, the feedback that has come in has been for more weekend and evening service. So I think it's pretty clear we're going to head that direction, Transit Tomorrow. But as Kate said, definitely provide feedback, if you have it, via the Open House Online. So I want to ask, well, I'm sorry, one other comment. It's great that I get to sit next to Mike, so we can fight about things. I actually share the same angst about making big investments when technological change is kind of en route, though, of course, on an uncertain timeframe. It's also important to say that it cuts both ways. There are a lot of technologies that are going to make the combination of things like walking and bike, walking and bike share and transit, more viable multimodal apps that are really still emerging, still in their infancy. Those are going to be a lot cheaper than autonomous vehicles. So we'll see, we'll see what happens on that front. It could make transit more interesting. I'm curious, for staff who worked on this and have done the open houses, a lot of what's envisioned, especially, say, in the River Road corridor, would mean big changes to the built environment, especially on housing. We're talking about higher density, mixed-use housing in some of these corridors, some of it's evocatively pictured here. What has the feedback been from staff? Because I think that's where we might need the most help and leadership from City Council to bring a message of real change, not just in transportation, but in land use. I'm curious what you've heard so far.
Well, to be clear, the Moving Ahead project does not develop land. However, we do have a federal Transit Administration grant to explore transit-oriented development along the River Road corridor, to explore how might potential development occur around transit stops in the corridor that fits within the neighborhood context and serves the community in, what you've heard before, a 20-minute neighborhood scenario, where people can meet their daily needs of living within a 20-minute walk. And so there's a connection to land use, and of course, through Envision Eugene, the transit system is expected to support the development of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood, the development of the neighborhood becomes dependent on the transit. There's a relationship there. But Moving Ahead doesn't redevelop land, it doesn't significantly change the public ride-aways.
I can add to that, though. From the land use side, what we have been hearing through the River Road Neighborhood Plan and the FTA-funded study is a general preference for adding density along the corridor, and possibly major streets throughout the neighborhoods. And so that's at the concept level right now. There's a lot of work in process that points to alignment with various efforts across the city. You mentioned housing work, so ideas that were generated by the Housing Tools and Strategies Group include adding density in multifamily housing along transit corridors. It's in Envision Eugene, it's in the Neighborhood Plan that's currently being worked on. So I think we're scheduled to come to council specifically to talk about River Road in May, and you'll get an update on the work then. Well, you can come as an audience member.
That's helpful.
Alan.
Well, Josh Gove said everything I was going to say verbatim, so I don't feel like I need to say any. Just kidding. So I was on the steering committee for a long time on Moving Ahead, and helped shepherd this along. So I very much appreciate the ton of work that it takes to get to this point, and all the public involvement it has taken to get to this point. One of the things that I've watched, especially where I grew up, in the Bay Area, and other communities around the country, where they have not done this kind of planning, they all go back and try to do it later, and it costs so much more. When the Bay Area folks started to figure out that they needed to do all this stuff, they were spending billions and billions of dollars to get this infrastructure put into place to make it happen. And as far as the future's concerned, this, the infrastructure is really what, where I think the ballgame is. This is the most important part. The infrastructure will be used regardless of technology, regardless of automation, and it's a multimodal plan, so that makes all of those things go better. So the infrastructure being in place will be used regardless of what happens to the technology. So I wholeheartedly support this and moving these forward. I'm struck by, on the MX package, the, I think this should be something that we add to this table about the packages, is the number of jobs and the number of population that are impacted by each of these routes. They're in the documents, but they're not in the summary table, so I did it myself. If you add up all of those, we're talking about impacting 138,000 jobs in the community, and affecting over almost a quarter of a million people. So this is a huge project, but it's also, with a price tag that is commensurate, but it's a huge impact on the number of jobs and the number of people that it really has. And the intersections, as Commissioner Yeh said, with affordable housing and densifying corridors, and the climate recovery ordinance, and decreasing greenhouse gases, and Portland does 20-minute neighborhoods, we do 19-minute neighborhoods. And economic development, all the enhancements that go along those corridors, makes all of this stuff, I think, a really sound investment from our perspective as public bodies.
Any other comments or questions from LTD Board? I think you've already-
Have I spent mine?
I think you have. Thanks, okay. Seating seated, Don, did you want, I guess, go ahead, Kate.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, so I'm in Sub District 7, which is where the West 11 MX is, and that was obviously about a 10- or 20-year project. Chris was there for a lot of it. And, yeah, it takes forever. What we've seen out of that, I got to come onto the board right as it was completing, and so Gary helped shepherd me into a new world of LTD, where the MX quarter was completed. And what we've seen since then is usable transit in our corridor, which was not necessarily usable before. We've seen improvements on our streets for bike, peds, and also beautification, so trees, and all sorts of things that we weren't seeing on this very kind of industrial, not very good-looking corridor of our city, which is an entry into Eugene as a whole. So I want to say that, seeing that outcome, I have a lot of faith in all of the packages that are presented, and I'll be very interested to see what the community decides. The other thing that I want to say is, just thinking about technology and the way that our service runs at LTD is very much what we're looking at in our Transit Tomorrow process. It is a three-year look, but the goal is partially to create a strategic business plan, as well as an iterative process for our board and for our organization, to continually look at how transit and transportation is working as a whole in the country and in the world, but specifically in our community, and how we can best utilize it. I think that it'll be very interesting to see what Transit Tomorrow brings for bus rapid transit, for how people want to use service, for what service we have that is currently usable and not usable, and where we go from there. Technology will play a large role in that. I think transportation that is not giant buses will play a large role in that as well. And so I believe that, looking at these five corridors, looking at more rapid transit, looking at updates for the quarter, I mean, that's what we should be doing. So I just appreciate this process, and think it's very timely, and I will stop talking now.
Thank you, Kate.
Mike wants a second round.
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mayor. I noticed with the Coburg Road, system-wide annual ridership increase with the MX, 258,000, I assume that's trips, not people, right? Somebody?
Boardings.
Boardings.
Boardings. Okay. So if somebody's boarding every working day, five days a week, that's about 1,000 I'm trying to roughly generalize here, and I recognize the difficulty of that. But here was my point earlier. What do we have in our community? 8% utilization of MX? Or however you want to say it, of busing in general, as a style of moving around in large, as Kate was saying, large vehicles? We have about 8% utilization?
You're saying like the percentage of commute-
The number of people who ride a bus regularly.
I think you're referencing the mode share that's collected in census data? Does that, what do you mean, the commute mode?
If you had to roughly estimate, how many people ride buses regularly? What percentage of people in our community?
I think it's closer to 5%.
Okay.
Commute to work, to be-
So my point is, I want a larger number of people to ride differently, and I don't think they're going to ride buses. For the cost of $113 million of just the Coburg Road MX corridor plan, if we did that alone, $113 million, you could buy 10,000 electric vehicles that are made in Eugene, I won't use a brand name. And you could do a rideshare program with 10,000 electric cars that all of us use to drive around, just when we need them, to go to the place we need to go, just with that same amount of money. And that's what I mean by the difference in technology, that I don't think is that far away. I'm sure it's not 10 years away. That we're going to have an opportunity to rethink this. Now, the corridor work will need to be done, certainly. But I hesitate to spend, you know, what would be, all combined total, hundreds of millions of dollars, to prepare for large buses to continue, and for us to continue to hope that will attract ever larger numbers of people to ride them. I think we have to rethink how public transit is done in order to get larger numbers of people to ride that. So that's all I want to do before we make that kind of investment. Thank you.
Was there an LTD board member who had a question? I want to make sure to get the ones who haven't had a chance to speak yet to have an opportunity first. Okay, go ahead, Don.
Well, I'm just responding to Commissioner Clark, because-
Counselor, but thanks for the, yeah.
President.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the, you know, extra motion.
This 30,000 extra vehicles, there's going to be 30,000 extra vehicles on the street, so we're not going to be getting the kind of mobility we want by adding more and more vehicles to the street. Just my response to your comment.
Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to have a discussion with you.
I think Mike makes a great point, and I think we need to keep remembering that it's not just about buses, which is what's so great about Moving Ahead, is that it's not just about buses. It's about people in their cars, being able to go through our transportation system better. It's about buses going through our transportation system better. It's about everyone, and how we can work together to make, no matter what type of transportation choice you make, to make it better throughout our entire system. And so I think these investments, since they are going to be affecting lots of different modes of transportation, are, make good sense for the long run. I know when I was standing out, being the 5%, commuting to work this morning on the bus, standing out there in the cold, thinking it wasn't raining, I was really looking forward to this, and how the system that I use to get to work is going to get better for not just me, but for everyone. I do, since I got a second chance to talk, I will take this chance to say, Package A, where Coburg has no build, I don't think anyone who has ever spent time on Coburg Road would tell you, this is great the way it is. I like this. It works for my mode of transportation. So I think Package A is completely irresponsible. I don't, we have to do something in Coburg. You know, we can debate whether it's a full MX or enhanced, but Coburg needs help for all different modes of transportation. So I would not encourage that package in any sense of meaning. But thank you very much.
Emily. Oh, Chris, did you need to respond? Please, oh, okay, go ahead.
I think I'd like to just put a word of caution, that we're not negating what's in Moving Ahead, because of possibilities that might be out there in the future, because we have congestion, and we have substantial growth coming into our community from other areas. And if we don't invest something into some of these key areas, I think we're going to be doing our community a disservice. And so I think looking at the packages and evaluating the economic sustainability of those choices is probably an area where we want to spend a little bit more time, before we just say yes or no to this, or to any particular key corridor. So that was just my two cents.
Chris, did you want to respond?
Counselor Yeh, I'd like to come back to your comments in the first round about Coburg Road and facilities for people biking, because it's important. While I suggested that those were design details that might be worked out in the future, you make a good point about how the community shares what their feelings are about investments for people walking there. We'll work as a project management team to consider your comments, and how we might share that with the community.
We'll work as a project management team to consider your comments and how we might share that with the community. I will say, though, that the environmental analysis that was conducted was based on what, what you see here, and that's something we'll have to think about. It's like, well, what are the potential financial impacts and, and others and the myriad environmental reviews that were endeavored? So we'll take another look at it, and thank you for the comment.
I appreciate that.
Any other, any other comments needing to come to the table? So before we vote, I just want to say that I really appreciate this larger document, and I appreciate Kate making that connection, reminding us of the connection between these corridors, creating the sort of backbone for what happens, and that Transit Tomorrow in the short term, talking about how those connections get made between corridors, those choices around the frequency of service versus the geography that's covered, and that those are the sort of, it's the larger map, but it hangs on this framework that's defined by these major transit corridors. So both decisions, so just a reminder, we will come back and hear more about, we'll hear more about Transit Tomorrow before we're making decisions about these corridors. And so that will, can help inform us also, correct? Okay. All right. So I think now we are ready to, I need a motion on the table to move this proposal forward, and you need a copy of it in front of you. Here you go. I move, sorry. I move to direct staff to take the Moving Ahead proposed investment package described in attachment C and D out for public review.
Second.
I think I have to.
We're separate.
I should have been clear. This is Council. We'll vote first, and then the LTD Board.
I think it was funny that the both of you did that.
We agree. All right. City councilors, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, none opposed, and that passes. Thank you. And now I turn it over to LTD.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on the table?
I move that the LTD Board of Directors approve the proposed investment packages as presented for public review.
Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
All those approved, please raise your hand. It's like everybody. Just in case, all those against, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, and that closes this joint meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council. Oh, I adjourned the meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
For LTD Board Directors. Oh, would all board LTD Board members, please take your nameplate in with you. And give it to Camille.
Not too cruelly.
As always.
Yeah, thank you very much.
They're making you take your things.
Nameplates.
You just have to keep showing up if you left that here.
Councilors, are you happy being spread back and forth with lots of acreage, or do you want to all move to one end of your, okay?
Do you want to move down?
We could. No, we'll just leave it. It's too much trouble. It's too much trouble. Let's just leave it.
Thank.
I am well. How are you?
Oh, I love your emails, Josh. Thank you.
Have time away from your kids to get through that one.
Once in a while, right? I'll just tell them, I can't talk to you. I gotta read Josh's email.
They're gonna, they're gonna give you that. I think you'll be okay.
I know. It's weird, right?
I've never had this set up before. I'll let you get going.
Okay, all right. Okay, good evening. We're now ready to settle back down, settle back down to the next round, and sorry about the distance.
You're so far away.
It's, it's physical, but not, but not intentional. So I am now officially opening the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency, and we'll turn it over to staff.
Thanks, Mayor. Michael, just get away with it.
Great, okay. Evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Michael Kinnison, Community Development Director, and I'm here with Matt Rodriguez with our Public Works Engineering and Emily Prouffitt with our Parks Division, and we're here to give you an update on the downtown riverfront project. If you recall, with much excitement, we announced in January the signing of the Disposition and Development Agreement with Williams and Dame and Associates, which is a significant milestone in moving this project forward. Over the next 12 months, we have much work to do, both in terms of process and site preparation before the actual development begins to take shape on the site. And we're here today to provide you an overview of the work and where the agency board or council will be involved. In addition to the DDA, topics we will cover include land use code and plan amendments, MPT, site preparation and infrastructure, the riverfront park development, and the steam plant. You're looking at the approved concept plan for the project. The DDA includes the terms approved by the agency board in July governing the terms of the sale of the property and its development. Included is the concept plan that lays out kind of where the uses are proposed and what those uses are. A summary of the major terms and a copy of the approved concept plan are included as Attachment A in your materials for reference. Since we've discussed the terms and reviewed, reviewed the concept plan a number of times with you in the past, and we don't have a lot of time today, we're not going into great detail about them. But I would like to note that, given our community's heightened interest in matters related to housing, the DDA calls for construction of upwards of 375 units of housing in our downtown with 75 of the total number of units dedicated to, as publicly subsidized, affordable housing. In July of 2018, council initiated a process for developing land use code and plan amendments to enable development of the riverfront consistent with the Williams and Dame concept plan. There's a graphic rendering of that, you may recall. Essentially, to make this vision come to fruition, we have to align the concept plan with the governing code portions of the code as well as the specific area plan there. The body of work related to this deals with code amendments to the downtown riverfront-specific area zone, refinement plan amendments, zone changes, a new Willamette Greenway permit, and a tentative subdivision to create the right-of-way and the parcels for the Williams and Dame plan. In terms of timeline for this body of work, we are scheduled to go to the Planning Commission for a work session and public hearing in April. After that, we'll move on to council public hearing in action in the summer, and our goal is to complete this body of work before your summer break. We're anticipating Williams and Dame to submit a MPT application in late summer for one of the first parcels to see market-rate apartments developed. This is a graphic of that first project. It's located on the eastern side of High between Fourth and Fifth Avenues. Council could see the application as early as late fall. In addition, Williams and Dame plans on submitting applications for the other two additional planned market-rate multifamily projects at some future date. And just for reference, the 3A parcel here is the first MPT project, multifamily project that we anticipate getting a MPT application for. And then the other two circles locate the other two parcels where multifamily is planned. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to talk about infrastructure.
All right. Well, I get to talk about the always exciting local improvement district process and give you an update on infrastructure and where we're going from here. So as you know, in July of last year, you approved a motion to initiate consideration of a riverfront improvement district known as NELID. That's the first step in that process. In October of last year, City Council approved a motion directing preparations of plans, specifications, and a call to bids for riverfront improvements, which is the second step in the process. So since then, we've gone through a request for qualifications process to get a design consultant on board. That design consultant is a local firm that was selected KPFF, and they're working on design of the street network, stormwater, and wastewater infrastructure, as well as coordination of the underground utilities. In addition to site design, we're currently taking extra geotechnical samples on site to inform the infrastructure design. And we've had salvage going on, on the onsite buildings, and BRING has been working out there and has actually taken hundreds of items out that can be reused in the community. Shortly, site demolition will start and removal of trees within the development area to prepare for the work this summer, which is site grading, riparian enhancement, and utility relocations. The next step in the LID process are to open bids for construction of the street network and new utilities in early 2020, followed by a public hearing. After the public hearing, the City Council takes action on the LID and authorizes a word of the construction contract so that the street network and new utilities can be constructed in that summer of 2020. The FY '20 budget will include the estimated infrastructure costs through March 2020, when bids are open for City Council to consider. And lastly, we're working on the Rear Road Quiet Zone project and still expect construction to be completed in the summer of 2020. With that, I'll turn it over to Emily to talk about the Riverfront Park.
All right. Well, the Riverfront Park is moving right along apace with everybody else. Let's see here. Okay, so you probably remember that last year, over the last year, we hired a consultant team, Walker Macy Landscape Architects, to help us develop a concept design for the park. And so last summer, we engaged over 3,000 people via focus groups, public meetings, and associated online surveys. And through that process, we landed on a final concept design for the three-acre downtown riverfront park and associated one-acre downtown riverfront plaza, which you saw last fall. And since then, we've been working steadily on the project and are figuring out all the details of making this project a reality on the ground. For 2021, we are now focused on the three-acre riverfront park. So that's the park where we purchased from EWEB for a dollar. It's the three-acre parcel right along the river, and we've elected to delay the construction of the plaza area a little pending development of associated surrounding infrastructure and buildings. So that's why you see that plaza area as a green swath right now. So this is the current plan that we're working from right now. I'll walk you through it a little bit, just to orient you. Let's see here, turn this a little bit, just to orient you a little bit. So the steam plant is here, EWEB headquarters are here, and the Defazio Bridge is here. So number one, the number ones, let's see, there it is, indicate overlooks. So those are a big piece of the project because, you know, a long-term vision was to bring the city to the river and the river to the city and for people to really gain a lot more visual access to the river, even though we can't gain physical access because it's a very high bank and it's the outside bend of the river. So, so lots of open views. Oops, I almost pressed that wrong. Also, a lot of feedback that we heard from the community was that they were, they really wanted a split modes path. So they wanted bikes and pedestrians to be separate, and I'll show you a section of that in a minute. But so we have two lanes, one dedicated for fast wheels and one dedicated for walking or maybe slower wheels. Number three on the map is a dedicated pedestrian walk that, that brings you out over the river further, and so it extends separate from this main bike path. So right now, the bike path runs across the top of the bank. We're quite close to the bank, and we'll be bringing it all the way back here. Number four is a deck. So this is a series of decks and viewing areas here. And this is the area between the tower and Fifth Avenue where we'll be laying back the bank and doing significant riparian enhancements. Number six is an art pavilion where we expect the pavilion itself would be a piece of artwork, and we anticipate that it would be a platform and a place for performances or all kinds of art to happen within our community. And then number seven over here is a kayak tie-up. So all of this work is happening above the ordinary high water, but this will be a simple tie-up where people could tie up their kayaks and walk up and eventually have a beer on the river. And then number eight is a significantly improved and fully accessible route up to the Defazio Bridge. So right now, you have to kind of go all the way around here and up, and it's quite steep. And this is a, this is a way that we will be able to provide a much better grade and a much more accessible route up to the Defazio Bridge so you can go across the river. I think importantly, we are keeping the EWEB Plaza and Fountain right now. We heard a lot from the community about how much they value that amenity. So here are just a few photos. I'll start with this section here. So this is kind of just, it's not perfect exactly what we're doing right now, but it's a good representation. So there's a tiny red line that you see here, and that's the existing bank. And we're going to be laying that bank back and doing quite a bit of riparian enhancement and then providing these overlooks so people can get right out over the water and see both up and down the river. You know, there's this beautiful bend in the river, and when you can get out and, out and over it, you can see up and down. It's really amazing. Then here's that smaller pedestrian path uphill to the multimodal path, and then back into park development and future building development here. Down here is a really good illustration of the multimodal path. So you see people jogging or walking here, wheeled people here. And then this is that pedestrian path that reaches out over, and a good example of an overlook here. The, one of the most important things I think that we are doing on this site and that the master plan really called for was to build a cultural landscape, you know, in the parks and open space areas. So interpret history, interpret culture, interpret in the environment, all in one place, and, and make that, you know, a big part of what it means to be there and why it's important. So to that end, we're starting to look at interpretive elements and specifically not 24-by-36-inch signs, but, but, but pieces that are integrated into the landscape as art and as interpretive pieces. So we're exploring ideas of energy, ecology, industry, and community, so thinking about the history of the site over millennia and maybe after the last 100 years. And we're, we're doing that in various areas of the site. This is just a quick example here. This is an example of an idea or an interpretation of how, of how the river used to be a very braided and very dynamic river, and that we've kind of narrowed it into one slot over time. And so there's these braided river pieces, and then each of those pieces extends up to the seat wall and extends into a bat, a bench back, describing some piece of the former or current ecology on the site. So it might be about a plant, or it might be about how the river was formed, or, or something like that. But, and so over this last week, we actually went out to several focus groups and talked a lot about this, these interpretive elements and tried to get their head on whether this was the right direction or not. And for the most part, we got a lot of positive feedback and a lot of good input about how we should be going forward. So next steps, park construction will happen in two phases. So along with the infrastructure work, we'll be, we'll be doing utility relocation work this summer along with riparian bank enhancement work. And then the second phase of construction will happen in the summer 20, the summer of 2020, where we'll be constructing all of the developed park features, including the overlooks, the paths, the landscapes, site furniture, and more. And, you know, the plan is for the Riverfront Park to be completed by spring of 2021 in time for the track and field world championships. So right now, we're doing a lot of permitting, a lot of environmental permitting, GO5 work. We're required to do all of those things just like anybody else, so. But we're doing all of that work in preparation to, to begin work this summer. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Michael.
In April of 2018, the agency board approved a process and criteria to select a preferred team for redevelopment of the steam plant. In August, the team led by Mark Mixis and Mark Frommeyer were invited to prepare a full proposal. The team has been very busy developing the proposal and engaging the community about their vision. The images here are some of the first images of what they're imagining for the space. Staff have been collaborating with them on their public engagement activities, and just to name a few, we've had a presence at the February 1st Friday Art Walk, the Tech State of the Union, most recently the Asian Celebration, and we had an State of the Union, most recently, the Asian Celebration, and we had an open house on February 7th. A survey has been developed, also solicit feedback from the public, and the response so far has been, has exceeded expectations with nearly 900 surveys completed. Suffice it to say, there's high interest in what happens with this iconic building, and people are generally really excited about what they're seeing. The team's full proposal and community feedback will be presented to the river guides in mid-March, and the agency board on April 8th. At that time, the board will be asked to provide direction on whether to move forward into negotiation with the team, and if so, staff will return with deal points for the board to consider in the summer. So in closing, we realize there are a lot of moving parts to this project. It can be hard to track them all, and so we just want to let you know we intend to keep providing you with updates as we move forward about key dates and decision points. There continues to be opportunities for the public to provide input and stay informed, and we will keep the downtown Riverfront website updated with current information, as well as providing email updates to our interested parties list. We're scheduled to be back here on March 11th for a larger discussion on the use of urban renewal funds within the whole of the Riverfront District, and then again in April with specific budget recommendations for use of urban renewal funds for development of the park and the plaza. And with that, for the remainder of the time, we're here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Do you have councilors who have comments or questions? Alan, and then Emily, and Betty.
Great, excited to see this move forward. Question about the MPT. So you mentioned that they were going to phase this in, and part of our revised MPT program is that you either pay into a housing fund or you do affordable housing, and so how does that relate to the affordable housing piece if they phase it in?
So.
Are they going to do two different things?
So the planned affordable housing are 75 units, which meets the threshold for the number of affordable units they have to provide, and the way the ordinance is structured, it allows them, projects that are part of an approved development plan, to apply for the MPT. So essentially, those three multifamily projects that are planned are eligible to apply, along with the affordable housing development.
So does the affordable housing get done in phase one, or is it in phase three and may never happen?
Well, there's not, there's, there's not really three phases, so the plan is to start vertical development on what we refer to as the northern parcels, which are the parcels that are, where there's already infrastructure, there's already roads existing, and that's where the first, the parcel 3A is located for the first multifamily. And then after that, I'm not sure the timing of the, the next project on, if I can read that, that's parcel two?
9A.
And those, those would follow later, 9A probably later than two, given its location. But right now, the plan is for vertical construction, I believe, to start in summer of 2020 on the first project.
So maybe I can ask a question. So do they have to finish the affordable housing project before they actually get the actual tax break, not the approval, but the actual tax break?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what you're, is that the question? Okay, sorry, I didn't understand.
John, could you say that into the mic a little bit?
Well, it's his question, so we can. The question was, so do you get, do you get the tax break of the MPT before you build the affordable housing? And the answer is no, they have to build the affordable housing. Once that gets built, then they get the MPT tax break.
That makes sense.
Right, it kicks in.
Good.
So you can't build the first two, get it?
Yep, and then walk away, right.
Maybe walk away. You don't get it. But you can approve it, and then, in the sequence as such. Yeah.
Okay, Emily?
Thank you. This is a pretty simple question, I guess, but the viaduct open space next to townhouse number four, what's that used for?
Specific use hasn't been determined for the space, other than just designated as open space, so we'll have to go through a process to figure out what might be the best type of, of open space use there. I know some folks have talked about a dog park early on. There's, there's a number of ideas that were generated when we were hearing from the public, so, but I think that's yet to be determined, what exactly that would be.
Well, that's exactly where I'm going, is that we need dog parks as, as we work on this.
It may have been you that I.
I'm sure it was. As we work on this infill, people are still going to have dogs, and as we have less and less backyards because of infill, and we haven't bought more parks, where is everybody going to take their dog? And if I lived down there and I wasn't a law-abiding person, I would let my dog run along the river path, and I imagine that will be happening, which isn't safe for small children or people who are afraid of dogs or dogs on leashes. So not just here, but wherever we're infilling, I really think that we need to take dog parks into consideration, and this looks to me like a perfect opportunity.
Betty?
Thank you. Two questions. Has the developer been assured that?
Has the developer been assured that MPT will be approved?
No.
What if we don't approve it?
Well, it's one of the contingencies of closing, so presumably, they, at that point, then Williams and Dame could determine what that means for them continuing with the project, but there's no guarantee that there's approval, but it's, the way it's structured is during this due diligence period, and one of the items that they're expecting is for council to consider a MPT for the project.
Thank you. And my other question is, street furniture was mentioned, does that, does that mean places for people to sit?
Absolutely. But it also, it also means, right, so it's benches, it's receptacles, it's lighting, it's, you know, all the things that are in our living room, right?
You have all the sofas you want.
Any other counselor comments?
I, Emily, I am really excited about the idea of incorporating some historical and other features into the landscape. That's really, feels really important to me, and that it's not just going to be little plaques, so thank you. And just out of curiosity, we did deconstruct the AgroPac building and kept those pieces, and is it possible that some part of that is going to be part of the park, or is that likely to go somewhere else? Or is that, do we know where those are?
We've been discussing the potential of that. We haven't made any firm plans for that. I think part of the challenge is that the materials from that building in and of themselves aren't historically significant. It's, it's really, the most usable material are the concrete blocks that are not, that are fairly unremarkable stamped concrete. So we're talking about how we can use that somewhere and help tell the story. We haven't quite figured that out yet.
Fair enough. I didn't expect an actual answer for that, but thank you. Alan?
Remind me why they're doing a ground lease for the commercial six and restaurant eight instead of the purchase?
I believe that Williams and Dame, they just, they weren't interested in completely committing by purchasing and developing those parcels, and they were more comfortable in a lease, just a lease arrangement to partner on helping make something happen there, but it wasn't something that they wanted to take on solely themselves.
That mean we're going to be involved in the development of those two parcels as a?
Well, it means we'll be involved in helping determine what the, what the tenancy looks like, and what the lease terms are, and those kinds of things.
Oh, yeah, I like that part.
It's actually, I think, a good arrangement for both of us in that sense, yeah.
Yeah, because we get a say in what happens in those two spots, which are pretty critical.
Any other comments or questions? Well, that was great. Thank you. Very, very interesting, very exciting. Look forward to the next phase, and we are adjourned until 7:30.